...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Motion to the Superior. Motion to approve the ordinance.
Thank you.
Motion to the Superior. Motion to the Superior. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Approve the minutes, and make four.
Motion to approve is printed. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. You have no further concern?
Yeah, two things, and I basically do a drainage. First of, I was here several months ago, maybe a year ago, and I'd like to see drainage maps on the county's website. And, you know, you do a lot of work with drainage, and you do a lot of, you know, engineering and cost and everything with drainage, but it's hard for farmers and landlords to actually know what part of, what drainage district goes through part of your farm and, uh, talk about, you know, by reading the paper, you know, the different drainage history. I mean, you can come up to the courthouse and find out, but I'd like to see it on the website.
We're working on that.
Okay.
We're doing a whole little website for the whole courthouse.
Yeah, I knew that, that was in the works so for quite a while then.
Had I just checked the, um, leak and spill. Uh, they're not supposed to have, uh, like it.
Okay.
Cause I hadn't heard anything from them for about a month, and I said, "What are you doing?" And they said, "We're still working on it." But we do plan to put it on the website.
Okay, good. And, uh, second question is, uh, I understand that if you want to hook into a county tile, that you don't have to get permission or anything. Uh, I, I was thinking years ago, when I was young, my dad wanted, uh, two hundred feet into, uh, county tile, and you had to come to the supervisor, the trustee, to get approval. And that must have changed in forty, fifty years, uh, I understand, but, uh, I have grid tiling, people up, upland, grid tiling four, five hundred acres, and they're running into a county tile that was designed a hundred years ago, basically, and I can tell that my tiles aren't working because, you know, the upstream comes down first always, uh, but these tiles weren't designed for, for grid tiling. They didn't know what grid tiling was meant to be.
No.
Especially when you dug it in by hand. Uh, but, uh, so is there a policy on, uh...
I believe if you, you have to be in that drainage district.
Oh, yeah.
But that is the benefit of a drainage district. Unfortunately, whether it's a new system, as some of them are lately, or an old system, there's still a lot of them are, I believe if you are, you have to be in that district. It's illegal to tile out of the district.
Well, they are.
They are in the drainage system. And I don't believe that drainage law dictates that you need a permit to do it.
No, I don't believe so.
If, if they're bringing water out of the district, they have to come in and ask permission to do that.
But then, then they usually get annexed in.
Yeah.
Just looked at if it can even be done, yeah.
But I mean, you know, I know the tile, we, we farm by drainage, drainage ditch, and it's bigger on our property than as you go out, it gets smaller to compensate for the, you know, but when you're draining five hundred acres, you know, grid tiling, that's just overloaded.
It does.
Yeah. Hence, a lot of these recent projects.
Yeah. That's, that's why we've been doing so much up, upgrading.
That's a very true statement. They, like I said, a hundred years ago, there was a little tile here, and a little tile there, and I bet when they dug those ditches, and I, it would have been a feat of engineering, like, a hundred years ago, you couldn't believe, they thought, "Man, this is overkill."
Yeah.
Well, they little did they know how much tiling has been done a hundred years later.
Well, do you know what type, uh, what size of tile that they're hooking to, I mean...
I don't know on their property what it is. Online, it's probably a twenty inch, I think, but, uh, but I know it does get smaller. But, you know, this wet spring, you know, and, you know, I got, you know, intake, you know, coming, the county tile, and after a major rain, it gets bigger, I mean...
If it boils out, then you're taking orders, putting water under your land.
But, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, if you want improvement in the drainage district, you gotta petition and have engineering, but if you want to hook into it, you don't have to do any engineering to find out if it's feasible or not. That's just my...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but most, everything that is done in the drainage, we follow the state laws or the code as to what and how, and make sure that we all do it right.
Okay.
Well, I can only imagine that the farmer has to make sure that they do it right, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess we can ask, make sure that the...
I think you pretty well summed it up, though, by saying, when these systems were designed, there was no idea that, I mean, whatever, every sixty foot tile in a quarter section of ground, it would be hooked onto these systems. That, that wasn't even a thought.
Well, they were designed for eighth inch coefficient, now we're up to an inch.
And they were designed for, you know, tile this wet spot, tile that wet spot, that's how they did it. And now they just say, "We're tiling every acre."
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's gonna lead to more improvements, which is gonna, i.e., bigger systems, newer, bigger systems.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks for stopping.
And hopefully we'll get the website a little quicker than...
That is a good thing. Keep track for everybody.
Okay, no more. No other concern?
Well, we probably could, okay, literally. Um, I put it on there cause I figured Ben would be in with something, you know, when I put down the agenda days ago.
Oh, the destination, you never know.
Yeah, so there's nothing that says that.
Okay. Board one, candidate results, Humboldt Ward one, so we need a little...
Ward one.
Ward one.
I'll make a motion to recess us for the supervisors and convene and for the canvassers.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye.
Okay, there are only two books this time, who would like to have one? Or should I pass them on?
Yeah, Dave doesn't...
There's one that's smaller.
Yeah.
Not one that's smaller, he can fight over that one.
There's a tape inside, um...
Tell you what, Sandy, if you ever canvass...
No.
This is a good experience.
Okay.
This will be very light. This is a very light vote compared to the...
The very front tape that's in the book, when you get inside, if you read it down far enough, you'll see the candidate name and, okay, down here, so you know how many votes were cast. That's what you need to write to me.
She just needs to know...
So, first thing, you know what precincts you have. So, Eric, which one do you have?
It says in the front.
Yeah. You have absentee.
Absentee.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it does say absentee.
Okay, so how many votes were cast in absentee?
Total ballots cast was fourteen.
Okay, but I'm just...
Okay, so down for city councilperson, Ward one, Matt Dominic with twelve.
Okay.
Do you need the written to end?
No.
Just, that was it there?
And then if you go to the pages back here, the write-ins are back here for it.
Okay, so I don't need the...
No.
Any more tape. Okay.
Go to there.
Okay, so this is the write-in votes.
Yes.
For the end, Council Ward one, Steve Boongarden, receiving two total votes.
Oh...
And that looks like that's it on that one.
Oh, they hit it wrong. Very, very quick test.
Okay.
Okay, we think we did.
Okay.
All right, says War, Humboldt Ward one, not precinct, okay, great, okay. Matt Dominic, ninety-nine, write-ins forty-three.
Okay.
Okay, and then it says write-ins, um, Council, Steve Boongarden, um, forty-two, and then a Jim Boongarden, one.
Okay. That's what I got.
Something's yet down with Doc.
Oh, I was like, okay.
So, that ends up with Matt Dominic with a hundred and eleven, Steve Boongarden with forty-four, and Jim Boongarden with one.
So, all those match?
Yep.
Your numbers?
So, determine the winner, we need a motion to determine the winner? You just determined the winner?
Nope, we just did.
Okay, I guess we'll go with that.
Oh, come on.
Sandy's making mess with your tape.
I'm sorry.
This tape is like long. For a hundred and fifty people...
Please.
Part of that.
I'm trying.
You're working a...
I know, but I know...
In the old days, the map would be the Chris Dust, like, who used the map line?
Yeah, exactly, okay. Said in the book, it's done.
Okay, you determine the winner. Motion to adjourn, the board of canvassers.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee for supervisor.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, committee report.
On Monday the twelfth, we had an LAC meeting that morning. Now, we're going to add for official meetings last week.
I left my book on, trying to leave my memory.
I know you have that.
So, on the Monday morning, I had the LAC, and I think the only other thing is, I went out and looked at a tile repair on thirty-three on Thursday. I think that's on too.
I had none.
On Tuesday, the thirteenth, I had, uh, I did it by phone conference, the, um, Iowa Workforce Development Region Five meeting. And that was it?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, on Thursday, I had a meeting, I mean, I... Also, Thursday, I went out and looked at a tile out here and drove township. And that's all that. And...
Surely Humboldt sent something from Midas, um, they're beginning the process to complete a strategic plan to guide Midas into the future. And they want somebody to, to fill out a survey. I don't feel comfortable doing that, so I will start with you guys. Maybe one of you will, um, maybe you are able to. Maybe you are. Caitlin Smith with Schumacher Elevators sent us a note, saying the state of Iowa is requiring all elevators to be brought up to code by May first, twenty twenty. She's attached a proposal for work to be completed on her elevator here in the courthouse, um, and the proposal is agreeable, then we need to sign it, date it, and return a copy to the office. So, I'll let you see that first. Eric had asked for a revised, so I got that, and all I had to do is change the name up here. Do you want me to make copies of it, so when you're ready to go, you've got copies?
Yeah, I think so.
Questionnaire, and Eric comes that one, um, and there was one, uh, working complaint, got confidential, so please share it between yourselves, and then get it back to me, and that's all I got.
So, with the elevator, A, we don't have a whole lot of control in order to keep the elevator, or the courthouse compliant with...
The state.
The state, we have to do that.
What, like seventeen hundred dollars? Seventeen hundred and forty-eight dollars plus tax, and if we want to, uh, saw electric door edge, we need twenty twenty requirements, and add another fourteen forty-eight.
Hmm.
So, the whole...
But you either meet the nineteen standard, or you can do the update for twenty twenty. Do we, would we have that money that is available to do? I mean, to me, they're gonna come once, why do you pay the second, um, fee to have them remobilized?
I agree.
If they're in the area for...
I imagine there are many elevators throughout the state.
Yeah.
The courthouse is better getting the letters.
Get on the, um, the job order, so we can get it done and get it over with.
I advise them to mention that they're gonna be cutting the next year, so they'll likely be back the next year.
Yeah.
That's all right.
I agree. Let's get it done. And then probably another seventeen hundred.
I'm guessing you're probably right.
Yeah, cause they'll increase.
And then we may as well have it.
Seventeen, oh, seventeen, right.
Do you need to make the motion on that, or?
Nope.
I'd just go ahead and fix it and have it...
Yep.
Looks good.
Dither do.
I'm not okay, dither that.
They're all...
Yeah. I am almost ready to complete taxes, I found a couple things I need to fix today, and maybe we'll be certified with pressure tomorrow.
Mhm.
I mean, I don't know if we've got all the guys.
And the other thing that Paul and Mary and Bob with the website, you said you talked to him, is there any other?
I haven't talked to anything from him for a long time, and the last time I talked to him was, like, September July, and he said, um, "Someone will be contacting me probably tomorrow for the next step," and I didn't hear anything, and I happened to think of it last week, and so I said, "Well, you know, I haven't heard anything from you," and said, "Someone will be getting ahold of you," and then that day, this guy called, and so he just needed permission to go ahead with the next step, and why he said, "Well, I don't know," but I have a feeling they've gotten kind of busy, and maybe we're on back burner instead of front burner, so I thought, "When I get taxes done, we'll get on their case." And I, I've been more of a, well, I'm totally...
Right, let's go down...
I think that, when you, when you do that, just send them, if they could put us the time table together, kind of where your deadline and where your...
There you go.
So, we have the ability to tell people that come in.
Hold it a bit, if I, if they have, "What is gonna be done by this time, and why?"
Yep. Well, and I was having some issues getting the, there were two weeks there, we didn't have any board video at all, because, uh, um, can't remember what happened, and she wasn't working, and I didn't know it wasn't reported. So, then we got, yeah, we got last week's video, just fine, but I can't get it to upload to the courthouse website. So, I had Travis in, and he did some work, and we thought we had it all taken care of. In the meantime, our new computers came, and we don't get to select, you know, what date we want them to come, they say, "Hey, we're coming this day, we're gonna do it." So, they came and put our new computers in, I came back to work Thursday, and nothing worked. Things are missing, um, I can't hook up, Travis is here now, trying to fix everything, so that this meeting will record, and hopefully, everything future from here. But then after here, it's gotta go up to the Humboldt County website, and that program was gone, and we're gonna use the new program to see if it works out. Well, technology, uh, works great, we, we'll put other issues in the way, but unfortunately, when you get new computers, they can't always put it back to where it was before, and that was what my issue was. I have all these special programs out, but it wouldn't matter, cause everybody in the office got new computers, so... We're all Windows seven, we had to be upgraded to Windows ten.
Ancient, right?
Yeah.
At least it wasn't boss.
That's right. We try to get our money towards when we get computers, so, other than that, um, everything should be good, uh, I can't think of any other issues that are going on.
Are we gonna get one of the other gal, uh, presses to learn a little bit of training?
They did, when Trish was gone, both of them jumped in, and did an excellent job of covering...
They did a good job on it.
Yep. I would love to, Trish would like.
Stop talking, guys.
And just, I would, the other thing, let people know that some of us will be headed to Des Moines for ISAC meetings on the rest of the week, from what, Wednesday to Friday, but there will be a couple that'll be around for long conversations.
You go to ISAC? No, not this year. Okay, I'll come over here, I'll...
But phones will still be on, but I guess we'll be down there.
Somebody calls me, Bruce, I'll be sure and give them a...
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, but just letting people know that we are going to, meeting's down in Des Moines, so, can't wait.
I already ran into your graphic friend at the store.
I heard.
He said he'd be watching.
I heard this morning, Peggy, that he ran into...
If it's highlight, if it's a...
Uh-huh.
I have something for everybody. Rick's heard this, Peggy, now I've got a little, not as much as I'd like, but the LAC meeting, so, Murphy, they have the structural part of the tower complete, so they're beefing up, if you will, like Rick said, they basically took a pile of angle iron and passed it off.
Yeah, basically, tolls have, they have all these things specially made, it looks to me like a pile of angle iron, lots of size of it.
You gotta engineer it, you gotta do all that stuff. Okay, so they've got that done, so the structural reinforcement part is done. So, then they go on, that they found that they had an issue with the U-bolt size for the one-inch rods at the top of the tower, and they were concerned about that, looking to reorder those, so they had them, um, and then they had some questions on the RF radio frequency, that would be the new equipment, which would be the microwave equipment for the new system, that they're still back and forth on as far as installing that. The engineer, who engineered, the F F engineer, engineered the angle iron and all that, set back that, to the Murphy Tower people, that the lack of the U-bolt connection will not reduce the capacity provided by the reinforcement, it's still required, any antenna loading that is going to be added, so in other words, the microwave dish can proceed prior to the installation of the U-bolts. The U-bolts, I believe, are holding antennas or whatever they're holding.
Yeah, other, other antennas or something.
But they don't correspond to the microwave dish, so the tower's structurally done, so it's up to speed, code, whatever, and, uh...
Year and a half late.
Oh, yeah, day late, hour short, whatever. And this is something I was hoping to hear, this basically is a reiteration of a week ago from the LAC meeting, did not, uh, because it was a week ago, the same information, uh, requested back to Motorola, Steve, is it Cook, Steve Cook, you know, the tower company's having some questions on the RF installation, they have questions, and they're gonna set up a call, well, I doubt they set up a call, and they didn't get, that would be between Kathy, Dearhart with Motorola, and Steve Cook, and their questions on the equipment. Didn't get any updated emails, didn't hear anything from anybody all last week, only thing I did get was an invoice from Murphy Tower Company for twenty-five thousand dollars for what they've done thus far. So, my question to the auditor, who is also the secretary for the LAC, who, and I'm not, I'm just throwing this out there, not saying that we have to pay this, who pays that? Who pays for all this tower business?
Like now the county is.
It's going through the county. Does the LAC...
So, that's part of the building and...
The tower, the tower really isn't considered, like, three on tenants with the equipment. The tower's structural, we own the tower, the county owns the tower, county owns the tower, so it's strictly county.
That's what people...
So, this wouldn't necessarily have to go through the LAC side of the power.
And where's the building?
The power.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine.
Well, the equipment, we're installing the equipment, it'll go through the LAC, is that right?
Cause that gets to...
Anything to do with the dispatchers.
That gets to the radio part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Cause then it's shared with the city. The, the county owns the tower, that's all.
So, before long, we're gonna have the same issues that we had last winter when we were chasing this thing around in circles, that we couldn't go up there because it was icy, it was windy, it was snowy, and we're getting to the point where we haven't done any of it, and we still haven't got this dish attached to the thing that we've been trying to do for umpteen months.
They said...
So, we just asked Peggy to get an update from, uh, about our website, we've been chasing our tail with this thing for almost as long as that drainage project north of town, and we still don't have our dish on our tower that...
Cause they...
We've had to beef up the structure, we've had to change the wire, we've had to change the light bulb, we've done everything except put the thing up on the tower, so...
Being, this is a county issue, they're asking if, you know, we'll pay the twenty, it's twenty-five thousand dollars and forty-one cents, that's for putting the stuff...
The structural part is done, and I won't, Rick can make his own comment, cause I know he made a comment at the LAC meeting, which I agree with, I thought, cause I had this beginning of last week, I thought by the end of last week, something would have, they would have had this call, they'd have the information they requested from the, you know, the technical side of it, which isn't me, it's Kathy and Steve, not, that's basically the same info. So, don't know where they're at, with, like you said, how close are they to, you know, did they get their questions answered? According to the John Erickson, who I know personally now from talking to him fifty different times, the engineer, he's saying, "Go ahead, you can put that up there, it's structurally sound." And I don't know what their questions are, so we're gonna stand still, the question is, do we pay them? Or, I need the direction, and if it's a county deal, from what the board of supervisors has to say about it.
By the time we get all this stuff done, the damn equipment's gonna be outdated, and we're gonna have to update the new equipment that we don't even have a, using yet, because we haven't finished doing what we were gonna do last time. That's my...
Why can't we hold it over their heads and say, "Hold that and..."
Kind of convoluted. Yeah. Well, I'm gonna, that makes like, I'm gonna put it to the people.
This is like a bad tooth, that you just keep going back to the dentist, and he says, "Yeah, I'll fix it," but we're not...
I, I'll give them today probably, but if I don't see something corresponding, I'll be calling someone, more, probably more than someone else, not with Kathy, and, uh, because she, she's all these emails, but it, it sounds like they could get their scheduling together and get the stuff installed, so...
So, is Murphy the one that's on the dish too?
Yes, they're supposed to be.
So, they're beefing inputting on the dish, so, why can't we just say that we're gonna hold the bill until you get the dish up there?
Tell me, I'll relay any message I get.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know...
That's why you're laying it out there.
I mean, you know, why, why paying the bill when they haven't, you know, okay, we'll pay you when you get that...
When the project's finished.
Yeah, when the project's finished, you get that dish up there, we'll pay you.
Yeah. Everything that we've got thus far, even from, it sounds like there's not a holdup to install that.
No, it sounds like...
They gotta hold up on something, now also, yes, maybe they need some verification, but not...
So, the U-bolts have nothing to do with the dish?
No.
Which, tower is as structurally... What are the U-bolts for, sort of, to hold the other antennas?
I'm wondering.
With the...
Do you want to give me any, thank you?
I know!
They just keep going on the block, and we're...
But, I don't know, I'm going off you, Sandy, let's just send them a little note back, why don't we send you a check on the project, who's waited in the county, county's got money for it, to finish the project.
But the dish, yeah, we'd be glad to pay you.
Don't get paid till the job's done.
Yeah.
I'll certainly relay that back to them. I've got no problem doing that, but I'm not, you know, I'd say I wanted to, they talked this, and this just came Friday, so...
Have they gone you that at home, or did that come up here?
It's gross, I like county computers, but they're sending it to me, but I'm not paying it.
Well, I make the most of it, Eric, with you, I just...
I know it, you know, I'm not paying it, I'm not paying it till it's done, because it sounds like it could be completed in early due order.
Well, I think, yeah, it's just... Put the darn thing up there.
And we know that the, the new equipment...
Our, our new monitor, they, "Get her done."
I'll tell them, we, uh, general, just up in the structure, they'll get it done, so you get it done, and we, if you remember, where the equipment is sitting there, this dish is sitting there, what needs to be installed is sitting there.
Been there for six...
Steve is, Steve is sitting there.
So, what if it's installed?
We have to get it done, because I, that's kind of where I'm at, but I mean, I wanted to see where everybody else was.
They're waiting, dragging their feet till the ice gets built up on it, that way we can...
Like you said, what have they got too late in the year, and like, Bruce said, "They're now the ones..."
Now, it's too windy to go up there with this eight-foot dish, cause it's big, okay, it was nice this summer.
Beautiful, right now.
Yeah.
I will.
Haven't had that many movies.
Yeah, I know.
I will see if I get something.
If you get a reply.
I will forward it to Peggy.
Six months original things that we have everything up and running, and six months is going to a year and a half.
Well, surely a year passed, over a year.
Right. So let's, let's.
Play hard fun.
The money's there, just get it done, so we can get it done.
Get it all done, you'll get the full payment.
Yep.
We're good.
Okay, fair enough, that's the story on the tower.
Awesome.
I'll see that.
We think we're fishing, um, right now, your time is.
You want to.
You were.
This is not, we don't need to go into drainage, but I wanna.
Right, keep it to a half hour, he's already.
Do you wanna just, a couple things, we had a discussion on this, is it thirty-three, correct?
Yeah.
Thirty-five, thirty-three?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five branch seat.
Thirty-five branch seat.
Thirty-five branch seat, we need to, uh, double check, there's some damaged tile, that when they got moved, or they were damaged, whatever, that are sitting there, obviously they don't wanna put damaged tile in the tower, so we need to make sure that there's tile to replace the damaged tile.
So they're gonna hold up waiting for it.
The timeframe is, as stated, from the seed corn growing farmers, mid-September, they got confirmation from the, uh, production plant, they're on track, things are going pretty well with their seed corn growing conditions, so mid-September, uh, therefore, I think he was alluding to the company better know, mid-September, when it's out, it's out, get it done, uh, what they call crush in place on the upper end, it's where it drops down to thirty-inch tile, that means install the new tile exactly where the old tile is, given workable conditions, which is dry, because of the fact that as they get up there, the landowners have a lot of their own private tile hooked to the drainage district system. It'll be much easier to hook it back up if it's in the same place. So that's their request, we need to get after that, uh, quick thing, the ag law closure project out here that we approved road crossing permits for, uh, last week, for Mansky Precision Drainage, that's going, at this point, is it's excellent, they're crossing the road in two spots, close to each other on Two Hundred and Forty Street this week, and they're wrapping up that project, it looks fantastic. Not a private project, it's not drainage district, but that's, that's, I wanna look at it, it looks super, and shouldn't be no issue with those road crossings. Another thing, we've got a drainage related, we talked briefly about this a month or so ago, remembering that in Cassuth County, in their drainage district, which part of ours is.
They're doing some work up in Cassuth.
They're filling it out with that, I requested us to Humboldt County, that someone would come and visit with us about what they're up to, because that water flows into Humboldt County. Then it becomes a non-drainage district, it's Lots Creek, basically, is what it is. So it starts as a district, way up in the northwest corner is K Two, and it, it goes out of the district into Lots Creek. And of course, our farmer friends in that, that part of the county greatly concerned, okay, what's the deal there? It's gonna, they're gonna straight, well, I don't know if they're gonna straighten, they're gonna clean, they're gonna dredge, they're gonna improve this ditch all the way across two counties down off of Cassuth, that water's headed directly to us, and it ends up in Lots Creek, to the Lots Creek, which is the Humboldt County. Requested, I think I'll request again, they don't know why, they requested that one of their engineers come and kind of explain the project to us. There is jurisdiction and drainage code, which is also talked about over time, there can be a little bit of clean-out into.
Go two hundred yards downstream.
They have to, they want to, but no one, they haven't really had the decency to come and talk to us, that water's coming right into Humboldt County. And whether there's gonna be more water, or whether it's just coming faster, I don't know, but they are doing this project, that's making Texas speed up for those.
Either way, that floods, it, Lots Creek floods all the time.
There's a bridge just north of Bow that was redone many years ago, there used to be two bridges, now there's one, it, it will flood that road, it floods the road now.
Yeah. So it floods all the way through the county.
That is a concern, but, yeah, 'cause we need to, it is a hard deal.
Hopefully their engineer will get ahold of us, somebody.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna just call one of the supervisors and say, hey, send somebody down, give us a, a, a explanation as to.
What you're doing.
And, uh, so that's something that, you know, it's, it's, it's a concern, you know, it's nothing, they're not changing anything, but they're improving that, we get more water faster, you know, we don't wanna have, or be difficult flooding than we're getting, so. That's my things on, uh, I think our, thing we do have the jurisdiction on is the thirty-five branch seat, we need to get those things.
I looked, I talked to Rick Hopper early in July.
About that.
About those twenty pipe, that were built, Jason marked, that, make sure that they'd talk to the company that they got them from, so that those twenty would be replaced when they, he assured me, but I think we should call him after the meeting, just to make sure, and then we can check on these two intakes for that project out there also.
Yep. So. When do you suggest me?
Soon as we go out of.
Okay.
Unless you wanna do it on camera, don't know if he's gonna answer.
No, I'm fine, I just believe that we all know about that.
Yep.
We need to do it right away, so they've got a little bit of time, 'cause, number, mid-September is time frame, so.
Well, let's play, let them join.
Yeah, it's hard to believe it's already ended up to.
Yeah, it is. I'm fine with that.
No, I'll make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nine oh seven.